I'd like to call the City Council Study Session Meeting of Tuesday, May 29th, to order. We have two items on our agenda for tonight. We will only be discussing one of the items. The item number two about the potential amendments, there was some miscommunication and we ended up not getting any, there's no new information. There's really nothing to discuss this evening, so, but it was too late to formally pull it. So, we will only be discussing item number one, which is the continued discussion regarding the City Council Ethics Policy. And it looks like we have Christina and Jeff.
Christina's been working on this. I think before that, I think Leah worked on this, and Leah's not with us anymore. Christina's taken up the mantle here. So, lateral, lateral it onto us.
Thank you. Okay, tonight, we're talking about the City Council Ethics and Conflicts of Interest Ordinance, which is Section 2-103 of the City Council Ordinance. It pertains to ethics in conflicts of interest, and it discusses the differences between actual conflicts and potential conflicts. And one of the sections we'll be discussing tonight deals with endorsement or opposition of candidates. This issue was discussed at the September 21st, 2017 Oversight Committee Meeting. One of the first provisions that was discussed was endorsement opposition of a candidate for office, which is subsection A 7B. At that time, they had requested definition of candidate, and there was a memorandum provided to the committee. They, the committee discussed whether or not the prohibition should extend to all candidates for office, which is how it's currently written, or whether it should just be candidates for city offices or other offices. And the committee recommended that that language be changed to just refer to city office, so that that way council members could endorse or oppose candidates for other offices not pertaining to the city. This item was also discussed at Oversight again on October 19th. And at that time, the committee members thought it would be a good idea to actually remove the endorsement opposition language altogether from the ordinance. They also looked at whether or not a provision should be added on to provide a majority override compelling recusal, and they looked at employment as an actual conflict as another issue to be addressed. The Oversight Committee recommended those three issues be submitted for full City Council Conference, which it was on December 19th of last year. And again, the three issues were removal of the endorsement opposition language, and then additional discussion. After the end of the conference, it was decided that most of the members present thought that the endorsement opposition language should be removed, but that there was additional discussion that needed to be had regarding the majority override and the employment as an actual conflict provisions. So, the first provision, again, as we mentioned, was the removal of endorsement or opposition language, which is there. And if we remove that language from the ordinance, it would just strike out an elected city official shall not use his office to endorse or oppose any candidate for office. If this language were removed, some of the issues that were discussed was whether or not it was actually a conflict, or whether it was an ethical question versus just a political question. There were some committee members and council members that thought that it was really more of a personal decision left to each council member as opposed to an actual ethical violation. The current conflicts of interest provisions in Section 2-103 subsection D discuss actual conflict and potential conflict. Both of those are defined terms in the ordinance. If there is an actual conflict, then a council member must disclose that, and is not allowed to participate in the discussion, or the vote would actually have to leave the dais. If there's a potential conflict, the council member would disclose, but may discuss and vote on the item once the disclosure is made publicly on the record. Whether or not a conflict is an actual conflict or a potential conflict, or whether a conflict exists, is a fact-specific inquiry, and it's a determination typically made by the elected official after consultation with the city attorney. The next provision that was discussed was whether or not there should be a majority override compelling recusal. The issue here is whether or not a majority of council should be empowered to override a member's recusal decision with which they disagree. Some important things to just remember is that under our charter, and council members are elected to be the voice of their ward, and they are answerable to ward voters. One of the other issues that was discussed is the potential that a majority might be able to silence a minority viewpoint by requiring recusal. And just as an important reminder, subsection H does provide language talking about consultation with the city attorney. If a council member has a question about whether or not they have a conflict, there is a provision there that they consult with the city attorney for legal advice. Some of the issues that our office looks at when analyzing these issues is that questions of fitness to vote on an issue are strictly considered in favor of voting. There's typically broad discretion in favor of a council member's personal judgment, and that's typically been recognized or recognized by courts. One of the other issues that was discussed in the December meeting was that there could be a potential loss of immunity protection if the majority acts to compel a recusal against the advice of legal counsel. And it was also discussed in December that there could be times where there could be potential invalidation of public action if the compelled recusal was used improperly to silence a minority opinion. If language was added to provide some sort of a majority override, new language could be added to subsection D 5, which basically provides that in the event that an elected city official believes another elected city official has an actual conflict in a particular item that refuses to recuse, a motion shall be made on the record stating the basis for the belief that such actual conflict exists. And it's notated that only a full majority, the five out of nine city officials, may override another elected city official's decision not to recuse, and then therefore compel the recusal. And that five-vote requirement does mirror charter provisions which require at least five votes for any kind of city action. And then the third issue that was discussed was whether or not de facto employment should be an actual conflict. As the ordinance is written now, it talks about direct or indirect employment consequences. Employment consequence is not a defined term in the ordinance, but again, that can be discussed considering a multitude of factors in consultation with the city attorney's office. If city council wanted to make just the simple fact of being employed for a particular agency or person a de facto actual conflict, the ordinance could be amended to amend subsection C 1 and 2. Some of the concepts that were raised in the prior meetings was pressure from an employer on a particular council member versus an overbroad exclusion. Some of the concerns were addressed on the one hand, could a council member face some pressure from an employer who had an item in front of council? But on the other hand, making employment an actual conflict could result in an overbroad exclusion requiring conflicts when there really aren't any in that particular situation. Another concept that was discussed was the appearance of a conflict, or basically public perception. Other items that were discussed was the effect of such a provision on large employers versus small employers. And then it was also discussed whether or not de facto employment as an actual conflict should apply to just city council members and their employment, or also to that of a spouse and/or close family member. As the ordinance is written now, employment consequence, direct or indirect, does pertain not only to council members, but also to their spouses and close family members. If it was determined to make employment an actual conflict by de facto, basically you would remove the employment consequence language, and there would just be a provision added that stated that the elected city official or any member of his or her immediate family's employment status with a person or organization seeking city council action shall constitute an actual conflict. Oh, too far. Considering all of the information that we had discussed and some of the potential issues, it is our recommendation to go ahead and remove the endorsement prohibition, which was something that this body had indicated that you all were comfortable with at the December meeting. And we would not recommend adding the majority override language, just due to some of the concerns we mentioned in terms of how that could be used inappropriately. And the third one would be to leave the employment consequence as a fact-specific inquiry as opposed to making a de facto exclusion from voting on behalf of citizens in the ward. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions or receive your feedback.
Why don't you put the three things, we're going to talk about it back up there, so everybody can look at them.
Sorry.
The last page.
Everybody can see what we're talking about.
All right, I went backwards. Okay, I did it again, I'm sorry.
It's okay, we all have it. I just thought it would be helpful for everybody in here to be able to see what the things we're discussing.
There we go.
Comments from the council. Councilmember Hickman.
I'm comfortable with your first two recommendations. I do tend to think that on number three, we'll never know all the facts behind the scenes of the relationship between employer and employee. And in an effort to have a bright-line test, and considering we have a bright-line test for employers, owners of businesses, I would prefer to have a bright-line test that has to the council member, it is a recusable grounds if we are taking action that benefits your employer, or affects your employer. That's my perspective. To me, that's in part based on the logic that this is not about any individual council member, it's not about any individual employer, it's about the institution of city council and the perception of public trust in that institution. And people will inherently have questions, because they won't know about all the relationships between employers and employees that could perceive, the perception could be that there's a conflict. But that's just my two cents.
Councilmember Clark.
That's way too overbroad. No one from University of Oklahoma could ever run for city council.
That's not true.
No, it is true, because, for example, the budget, the main thing we do, I couldn't vote on. So, why would I run for city council then? That would be unfair. Why would anyone vote for someone who works for OU knowing they couldn't vote on half the important issues? You want to talk about direct benefits. Every single road improvement we make in Norman has a benefit to the University of Oklahoma. I mean, that is so broad, you were taking out OU. And if that's what you're wanting to do, fine, but I will not support that, because we're already limited on running for county, state, and federal offices. And now, so the most educated people and passionate people and hard-working people are now taken out of local government. So, I will not support that.
Jeff, does our, I guess I'm confused. I don't interpret that way. You know, do our roads benefit the University of Oklahoma?
CART does.
I mean, in that sense, and every employer would be conflicted.
I think the way we've applied the current language is we look directly at whether an employee has a direct benefit or employment consequence before we say they're recusing. But as I'm understanding this proposal, if you work for any employer, you're just automatically recused regardless of whether or not there's a direct benefit or detriment to that particular employee. So, I think it is broad. I think you would put yourself in a position where you'd have all kinds of arguments about whether every road in Norman benefits any employer, and so maybe you exclude all of them. So, we'll just have to litigate that and see what the court says about it. I think, I tend to agree it's broad, and that's one reason we didn't recommend that this proposal go forward.
Other comments from councilmembers?
Well, then if that's the case, then every person who owns a business currently, he owns more than 5% should have to recuse on the budget vote. Right? Because that's an automatic recusal.
If my business on Main Street Norman is benefiting from the streetscape enhancement, and I own more than 5% of that business, then I would have to recuse on voting for that streetscape enhancement, based on your logic and Councilmember Clark's logic. Because that's the standard right now for business owners. I'm just saying, why isn't there, or why can't there be a comparable standard for employees of businesses or employers that benefit, that's comparable to the 5% standard for business owners? Because what I hear right now, like I said, is that my business on Main Street is, could benefit from Main Street Escape Enhancement, or for that matter, every road, I guess, in Norman, because people may drive to my office to work for me. Or same for Andy Alligator, or Friendly Market, he's not an owner, I'm sorry, but Kyle is, or Annie's, Rough House. I guess we're all committing ethical violations, we've been voting on things. That's what I'm trying to clarify.
No, I disagree with your analysis of it. I think the way it is now, we look at each individual situation and see if there's a direct benefit or employment consequence of an employee. For example, I think Councilmember Bearman is now working for Annie's Rough House, correct?
I'm a part-owner.
So, if, under this, if you thought a widening of James Garner, close to your proximity of your business, would confer a benefit to that particular business, or even detriment, then you could argue that they should recuse from voting. So, that's two votes, it couldn't even vote. Want a proposal of whether to widen James Garner? That's what you want, we can write it that way. Our opinion is that's overbroad.
Other comments about that?
I mean, I think it is, it's a challenging, because even in the, even the current ordinance, I think is challenging. I think this would take it even further broader, even our current one. I do sympathize with you on the ownership piece, because, I mean, our company's not large, but it is large enough that, for instance, if there are small groups of kids coming from a, the rec centers come to visit us for a field trip, should I not vote on the budget? Because that, and they do come, but to tell you the truth, if they come or they don't come, it's not a detriment to my employment, or my well-being, let's just say it that way, and profitability. But I shouldn't be penalized for that. And so, that's why I think when we look at each individual case, like, you know, we've asked city attorney's office to do in the past, and things that I've brought up, it is, it's tough, because there is such a weird line, you know, there, even in the current ordinance, and I feel like that I shouldn't be, you know, I shouldn't, my vote shouldn't be taken away because it's something that I really is not going to benefit from. Like, if someone comes or doesn't come to my business. Now, if it was a large, huge amount of my revenue, then yes, maybe it would benefit or be a detriment, but the $100 that my company's going to get from that trip is not a detriment to our profitability. And so, that is, it's tough, even the current one, I think. And so, that's why I think in the beginning, that's why we looked at this, but then it kind of morphed into a bigger animal, to try to figure out what's the, and also, I was kind of reading some of the public feedback on this, and it's kind of all across the board. Because people just don't understand the relationships that people have within their own businesses, or with businesses they work for. It gets even harder as you get into a larger, you know, our largest employer in Norman. So, it is a tough, it's a tough topic.
Councilmember Holman.
I think in the committee, most of us felt that the council, this council, other councils, over the years have had a pretty good track record of disclosing conflicts and recusing when advised to by legal staff. I don't, I can't recall any, in my time anyway, any council members refusing to recuse when advised to. I think, for me, the discussion really revolved around the endorsement prohibition part, and that was just something that kind of got thrown in there, along with the majority override stuff. But I didn't feel that there was a real problem that we needed to address when it came to disclosing conflicts and council members doing that, doing the right thing. And I would feel that it would be pretty broad to say any employee of any business is de facto excluded for, you know, I don't know, if something, if something happens within two blocks of Friendly Market, just because I work there, does that mean, or because I work the door at the deli two nights a week, and something's going on campus corner, can I not be a part of that, or can I? I don't really make any more money whether or not, you know, you know, a street is repaved two blocks over from the deli, or whatever. So, I would keep it the way it is.
Councilmember Bearman.
Is there a way to kind of parse the two, between something that does have a broad benefit, like the budget, or, you know, like CART that serves a wide range of purposes, and, as an example, a road to one business? You know, is there, I mean, because I feel like, I feel like I understand, I understand both sides of it, but if we're talking both extremely broad topics like the budget, or something like the James Garner corridor, versus, again, something like a road that leads to one business, or something that more directly benefits, you know, one area or one type of institution, you know, maybe that, maybe that is a way we can kind of parse this. Because I also, I also just feel like the way our ordinance is written is that it's so broad, that if you do not believe there is a potential impact on your employment status, doesn't necessarily mean that there won't be. And, you know, making a decision to recuse, if there's pressure from your employer, doesn't necessarily avoid any employment consequence if you do recuse. I mean, I feel like it's much more likely that employer is going to pressure you to vote yes on a certain thing than to vote no on a certain thing. So, I mean, I just feel like instead of just talking about this in extremely broad terms, if there's a way we can kind of shoot down the middle and find some kind of middle ground between only employers, only employers or business owners have to recuse, and any employee of any business that benefits from $1 of our budget must recuse on something as broad as the budget. I mean, I don't feel like it has to be either or. That there should be a way that we can kind of have a foot on both sides and, and find some language that, that deals with that, so that we're not having six council members recuse on the budget, because if you own a business, or, you know, work for a large institution that benefits from every single street in Norman, you know, we have quite a few business owners on this council, and if that's going to be, if that's going to be the standard, then they're going to be, they're not, they're not even going to be five votes to vote on the budget.
I just think that we certainly don't want to do it as a de facto exclusion. We've got, our major employees in Norman are the university, the school system, the technology center. We've had a number of council members from all of those organizations, and it does become difficult. What I have seen, I'm just going to kind of echo what Councilmember Holman said, and since I've been on the council, I think people have bent over backwards to recuse themselves when they thought there was any appearance, even when I think they've been advised by the city staff that that's, that you don't really have to recuse for that. I think people have shown themselves to be very careful about that, and to me, that's what you have, instead of just a blanket kind of thing, you have a situational thing, where not only the person themselves, but other council members can weigh in on what they think about it. And I think the only time that I saw kind of a reaction to something did have to do with, with the university, and I thought it was really unfair. I didn't think that it had anything to do with Mayor Rosenthal's job, or what she was doing. So, I just think we want to be really careful and stay away from that. And we don't want to make it any harder for people. One of the things Councilmember Youngman said when he got off, was one of his frustrations, was because he worked for the Department of Housing and Urban Renewal, that he felt like his bosses required him to recuse so much of the time, and that that was, it made it really hard on budgetary issues and other things. So, I just think those things are things to think about.
Why don't we just amend the ordinance to be, if you think you have a conflict, just go ahead and recuse. And just, that way, you know, that seems like that would appease everybody. Not, that, isn't that kind of what we're wanting?
Isn't that what it is?
Well, no, 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 but if you own 5%, you're out.
Yeah, if you're a business owner, if you own 5% of a business, and it's, has a benefit, then you're out.
I mean, I have no discretion.
Not even just during council, for a period of so many years after, you can't bid on city business, and stuff like that, which is probably the right thing.
For contracts.
We're already a anti-family-friendly council, we can be a small business anti-family
Some of the discussion when this was passed way back then, I think several of us were actually on vacation when this came through. But when it came back, and there's been some different discussions about whether we amend it and whether we don't, it's just been a discussion of what was the purpose of this ordinance. It's very hard to legislate morals, it's very hard to legislate ethics, but you do give general guidelines. And I think one of the concerns before was whether or not this set of rules would end up being used more as a sword as opposed to a shield. And so, a search, a situation where you have a majority of council members mandating that someone who's been elected by their ward to represent the interests of their citizens that elected them, mandating that their voice be silenced, is what was the concern about not allowing this ordinance to be used as a sword as opposed to a shield, or something that would actually protect yourself. So, the focus of it was really more towards disclosure. And I think, as has been pointed out, disclosure, that has brought about, since it's been approved, very active councils over the years of making sure they disclose, because they're, the ultimate accountability of the actions of those elected people are to their constituents. And so, you want to disclose, and then let them make the decision at the ballot box, whether you're pushing the line too far, one way or the other. But I think there was very, a lot of concern expressed, that we didn't want to get into a situation where somebody has taken this ethics ordinance and beating, you know, a colleague over the head because you didn't agree with how they approached a particular issue, that that should be left primarily to the voters. And so, that's the way we've endeavored to interpret this, whenever these issues come up. We usually, and all the ones that we've talked to, and these things have come up, we lean towards encouraging you to vote, because that's your obligation as an elected representative for your constituents in your ward. So, unless it's a very clear conflict, or you have an actual benefit, or detriment, or employment consequence, you will not hear out of our office a recommendation that you recuse, certainly to disclose, but not to recuse. And that's because of your obligation to represent the constituents that elected you into these positions. So, that's the reason we've approached it this way. And so, I would, it's one reason we do not recommend number two, because that moves you more towards using it as a sword, and that's another reason we don't recommend number three, because we think that ends up being a sword against potential large employers in Norman, and we have a hard time getting qualified people to run for council anyway. I have a good group now, don't misunderstand me. Okay, but I'm just saying.
Except for that Annie's Rough House proof.
So, what I'm hearing is maybe move forward with number one, removing the endorsement prohibition?
I'm just going to make my personal statement. I'm fine with removing the endorsement prohibition for other offices. I think it's a mistake to remove it for council. I think, I think it is best that we leave that in there. I think what could end up happening is, I can see situations, one of the reasons it's good to have it in there, is because the people that are on the council stay more neutral. And then, when people come on the council, you haven't been out there trying to campaign for another person, if your person you're campaigning for does not get an office, and we're supposed to be trying to work together. So, and I can see council members maybe splitting up over this person and this person, and the way Facebook goes, I just, I think it would not be a good start for any new council member. But that is my personal opinion. Councilmember Wilson.
I sort of agree that the city, I prefer that we not endorse city council offices, candidates, as a city council. I would also like to, I don't know if this is written into the language, but I would also like to remove any ability to endorse a candidate from the dais, or anywhere, that we can personally endorse, but that we can't sit at the dais and say, oh, go vote for governor, here's my candidate choice. Because if we see some, some of that kind of happen with businesses, which we're all trying to promote businesses, I would hate councils a few years down the road to start going that direction. If we loosen this, I would like to say that, for the record, I would prefer we not endorse any candidates for any office from the dais.
I would definitely agree with that.
I don't know if that's written anywhere, I didn't see it.
And I'm not sure how, how we would. And I'm not sure how, how we would handle it, but it's really separating our roles as, I'm sorry, I think I'm losing my voice. It, it's really separating our roles as council members from our personal roles. And I, and I think that there's a lot of desire because we're all interested in politics, there's a lot of desire to, to maybe support other candidates. But I, even, even with that, I don't think it should be done, certainly from our position.
Well, and, and I'm sorry, just to kind of go ahead on that. I would like to be able to make a phone call and say, hi, I'm Sarita Wilson and I like so-and-so for governor, president, senator, you know, city of Oklahoma City, you know, but I.
But that's you as a person?
That's me as a person.
Well, and.
Councilmember Clark.
Piggybacking off that, if I wanted to knock doors for a candidate, I feel like, I, I may not say I'm a council member, but they might know who I am, especially if I'm knocking doors in Ward 6, and I think I should be allowed to do that. But my concern with limiting it to just the dais is more people watch us and follow us on social media than ever watch our meeting. Let's just be honest about that.
That's true.
So, then that kind of gets us back to where we're at, like, I don't, could use official platforms to endorse candidates?
That's how it is now. Official. It's too broad.
Is that how it is now?
It's.
It says to use his office.
You can't use your office. So, basically if I have a city council Facebook page, I can't do it, I can go my personal Facebook page. Some people are interpreting it, I don't interpret it that way, but some people interpret it that way.
So, if it's not on your ward page or?
They're not our ward page, Republicans.
No, like, our Bria Clark, Norman Ward 6 would be my, my official.
But the Ward 5 page is not my page.
Yeah.
I'm not even a.
Councilmember Hickman.
Um, I, I've got a real problem with this for lots of reasons, um, one of which is, you know, one among us really likes to file these things and seems to enjoy filing ethic complaints. The Facebook issue is a big, to me, is the most problematic. I went and looked and I think besides Kyle, I think Kyle and I are the only two and maybe Lynn, I can't remember. Everyone else in their bios, on their personal Facebook pages references that they are city council members, which is fine. I don't. Someone intentionally to have a separation between my personal Facebook page and my Hickman Ward 4 Facebook page. But some people still think that using your personal Facebook page is an endorsement if you say something in it about somebody, whether you're just offending someone or, or otherwise. And some people even think that private messages are a form of endorsement, which I'm not sure how that's an endorsement because to me, an endorsement has to be something done publicly. My point just is, is if we're not going to remove the endorsement prohibition in toto, then I think we need to start adding in definitions and protecting ourselves or adding in consequences for those who use it as a sword inappropriately, kind of like as a lawyer, we have what's called Rule 11. If you file a frivolous lawsuit, you can be sanctioned, you can be punished, so that it creates a little bit of a bar from people just thinking, oh, I'll just throw out there an ethics complaint against somebody for fun. Because we're all presumably busy enough, have enough things to do that we don't need to deal with those kinds of things and we don't need that from a trying to work together perspective. So, that's why, while I don't think it is good practice to endorse candidates for city council, I certainly think we have First Amendment rights that go beyond our duties, if you will, or that are in conjunction with our duties as city council members. And fundamentally, I don't think it's an ethics violation for us to endorse people at any level. Any other elected official, you know, Emily Virgin or John Sparks or President Trump can endorse people, period. You have to just, I think we have to just decide, Mayor Miller, does she want to weigh in on a, on a city council race? And let's be honest, to some extent, it might actually make things more transparent because there are probably people making phone calls already behind the scenes at all levels. And, and if, if not, then is donating money going to be considered an endorsement? I think we had that discussion, uh, one time when Robert was here. You know, you know, that's going to, your, your name's going to end up on a list as donating money to somebody, that certainly could be considered an endorsement. I don't know if it is or not, you know, is, um, you know, we, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to draw those lines. So, I'm not a fan, I think I said in one of the early on meetings about removing this prohibition. However, I've seen it used, I think, in a manipulative and inappropriate manner. And I think therefore, there is no alternative but to remove it or to dig in and expand upon this ordinance in substantial detail with definitions that might seem silly and ridiculous. However, we have those among us who I think are, need those level of details and definitions so we don't have ethical complaints filed against one another.
Councilmember Holman?
Um, I agree with most of that to a certain extent, I think. I mean, I'd be open to working on definitions that narrow it down to city, city races where can't use the dais and you can't use your official city council page, like clarify, not your personal page, but your official Stevens, or Ward 7 city council member, Steven Talamo, or whatever, can't be used for that. Uh, but I agree, there's been multiple issues over the years where I've seen where, um, you know, this accusations of ethics violations because your name appeared on a flyer for a candidate in northeastern Oklahoma and, or you oppose the district attorney and don't, or encourage people to not reelect him. Um, you know, I think we should be, have the freedom to do that and not have to worry about frivolous ethics accusations. Just being accused of that can make people think ill of somebody just, oh, well, they're being accused of ethics violations, what's going on with them? So, but I, you know, I do agree with others that it's not a good idea to, I don't think, to endorse city council candidates while we're sitting on the city council. Um, I think it could create a tense, a contentious, uh, working relationship if you, you know, endorse the wrong person or whatever like that. So, whatever happens, I would, I will personally not be endorsing any city council candidates while I'm sitting up here, but I would like the ability to talk freely on my personal Facebook page about district attorneys and sheriffs and state legislators and governors and things like that, so.
Could we move forward then on the endorsement of all other candidates and then look at some restraining language for city council?
Sure, whatever your pleasure.
I hear the point about it needs to be more, it needs to be more specific.
So, what I'm hearing is not, not on the dais and not on a city-sponsored, uh, Facebook page.
None of the pages are city-sponsored though. Even the ones where, like, Bria makes her Ward 6 page.
I would say candidate or official-sponsored social media, because like I have a Twitter, you know what I mean? That's, that is the city council one. So, I, I wouldn't say just Facebook.
But you gotta say, if you can't really name platforms, you probably need to say something in general like.
Dedicated council social media.
Marketing platforms or something like that, because they're going to keep adding stuff.
Well, it might not be hip enough.
Even other people might be.
Or your identified.
And that's why I was saying, your identified official page and even like, things like taking a picture in front of city hall with my name tag on and holding a, I don't know, people do create.
We had the same problem with the social media policy when we talked about it, you guys, we do not have official pages. So, I think as far as you guys are concerned, I don't know how to tell you to proceed with the definition because this is why we couldn't come up with a social media policy. There are no official pages for us, we create all of this, they're our pages.
And I go, I mean, I go back to if we trust ourselves to know when to recuse and the fact-specific inquiry, which, you know, I, I'm, I understand, then we should trust ourselves enough of how to handle ourselves when it comes to endorsing people that run for office that, you know, we, we may or may not want to endorse. I mean, and, I mean, to me, I don't know why we, we want to not regulate ourselves when it comes to things that might deal with actual votes and conflicts, uh, and leave ourselves with broad discretion there, but we want to still impose undefined limits on what we can do using our First Amendment rights to endorse folks. Like I said, I was originally saying the same thing that the mayor's saying, however, I think it's, you know, to me, the office is pretty clear, it's not someone's personal social media page, it's not private messages, but that's not how people are putting it into practice. And so, without clarifying it in more detail, um, I think that we should trust ourselves to be prudent in how we conduct ourselves, both with our votes as well as with our quote "public endorsements" if we choose to do that.
That doesn't get to the problem you described earlier with the people that are frivolously reporting you, even though you use good judgment, you know what I mean?
Well, no, if we take it out, then it does, because then there will be no grounds to say that you endorsed or you opposed somebody.
Yeah, and then it's just a kind of free-for-all.
Yeah. And which, which is not the case when you're talking about recusing or not recusing because there are some guidelines, we do have, we do have legal consultation and it's all very, it's all very public. You're going to have to make that decision in front of the other council members and everyone else. When you get involved in somebody, actively involved in somebody else's city council race, that's affecting a whole lot of, of other people and it has lots of other consequences in terms of the, what happens on council during, before, and after. So, I, I, I just think, I just think it's, it's a bigger deal. I don't have any trouble with the endorsements of other candidates. I think we have, we have a right to, I mean, if you want to argue First Amendment, yeah, we have a right to do that, it's just, is that a good idea to do that? And I can just think of some really bad situations ending up happening. Councilmember Bearman?
What do other cities do? Oklahoma City have a similar policy about endorsing other city council candidates or Tulsa?
I know, I know, we looked at this way back in.
They've looked at it for the other candidates, I know. And they, they did not have as strict an ethics policy as we did, for sure. I don't remember though, talking about for other council members.
I worked in Oklahoma City for a decade and, you know, I mean, a number, a number of my colleagues worked and live in Oklahoma City and if they don't have a policy like this, I'm not seeing a whole bunch of, you know, seat A endorses candidate for seat B. So, I mean, I, though I rec, though I recognize the concern that this could bring up, I would like to think that if other, if other large cities, you know, don't have similar policies and don't face those issues, then we probably have, should trust candidates and council members to police themselves the same way they do in Oklahoma City and Tulsa.
We can sure look. From a legal perspective, I've been grateful we have not gotten any First Amendment challenges on this. I think they're going to be very difficult to defend, uh, your positions, although not partisan, they are political positions, uh, you do represent viewpoints of constituents, uh, it's all about representation. Uh, so, any restriction that has some, um, negative consequence as an enforcement sets us up in a very difficult position to argue that this is a reasonable regulation of First Amendment rights and it's, it will be difficult. So, I've been glad we haven't gotten that yet.
Yeah, I certainly think a person who had a claim for First Amendment rights that said they had violated ethics for private messages for using a personal social media page for which it references in no way that they are city council person would certainly be a First Amendment violation. However, some people think that that's an ethical violation under our ordinance and that's my problem, period. If we're not going to, we either need to take it out or we need to fix it.
I say we remove it.
See what happens.
See what happens? This council can certainly revisit it.
There's no consequences anyway.
And there are no consequences, other than the using it as a sword to then say, oh, that person's had ethical complaints against them.
Yeah, it just makes you look bad.
Yeah. And it builds great council relations. So, might as well remove it. Because we're not, they're not, this isn't helping anyway, having it. Might, might take the risk to the other side of letting people be more transparent.
Okay, we can have that prepared for your next.
Could we check on Oklahoma City and Tulsa too, please?
First?
So, right now, we're at one, removing endorsement prohibition, two, we're not adding the majority override language and we're leaving employment consequence, um, as a fact, to specific inquiry.
I thought one was except for city races.
Well, that, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing something.
We've discussed it down to just remove it, that's what I'd heard.
No, I'd like to leave except for city races.
Good, so would I.
Yeah, I, I think we should stay out of city races.
I think we should too, but again, there's no consequence, there's no enforcement of anything other than just trying to make other council members look stupid. I can go endorse anybody I want, there's nothing any of you can do about it, other than file a complaint against me. So, I mean, a complaint that has no consequence.
You guys don't want to include that?
That's why I'd like, I said I'd like to see what Oklahoma City and Tulsa do because I'm not seeing that as a huge issue that either city is dealing with and, I mean, like, like has been discussed, it really is just being used as a tool.
Wasn't that added in not too long ago? Because I remember like Tom Kovac talking about this, about how it was a big to-do and they added it back in because he remembers it used to be a, I, I remember having these conversations with Richard Stewicki and, and people in Ward 2. So, this, this, that this was put back in on purpose because it's been problematic. And that's why I'm thinking, why are we so quick to take this? I don't know.
I think is, people are still, people are still endorsing in a way, you know?
2007, there wasn't social media either.
People are still endorsing through, like I said, as a donation endorsement, well.
Or liking someone else's Facebook page, I don't even do that, I'm so freaked out.
In my days, like, so if I give, so now my wife and I have to go get separate checking accounts, if I want to give to another candidate, like, literally, I had to do that, I had to go, like, not a council, not a council candidate, but like a state candidate. Like, I can't write my, we have joint checking account, I couldn't write them a donation. I had to have my wife go get her own money and write a cashier's check.
I think we're pretty, we're, we're clear on the endorsement of all other candidates. I think we're all good on that. I think the, I think the area that some of us are still uncomfortable about is endorsing.
I agree with you, I think it's morally wrong for me to endorse another council candidate, but it's so hard to enforce, well, it's not, you can enforce it. Like Stephen said, that it's like, then do we leave those things up here where we start having those wobbles back and forth between people or saying, you know, it's happened with us, it has.
I don't think it's necessarily morally wrong, people ask you all the time, you know, who you like, who you don't like, who do you, you know, and it's so, it's almost like, I can't tell you who I like, you know, like, I can't tell you who I've worked well with or who I've had good conversations with, I can't, I can't, I'm sorry.
I think it's been very freeing to say that. I'll be honest, I think it's been very freeing to say that, no, I'm not allowed to endorse.
Yeah, that is kind of true too.
I mean, I, I'll be honest, I mean, no offense, Joe, but I was like, hey, I'm not allowed to endorse anybody, you guys choose whoever you want to take my place. I mean, I, in, in, I think it's easy for us to sit here when we're on council, but when you are facing the fact that, yes, your, people are choosing your replacement, it puts you in a different perspective and I felt very comfortable saying, it is not my position and I am not allowed to endorse. And people were like, really? I'm like, yep, city charter. And they were like, oh, okay, well, thank you. And I'm like, that's right, because it just removes that from you as a, as an official. I know people wanted to know my position, but it, it felt inappropriate, right? So, I, I will tell you guys, maybe you're not thinking about it from that perspective, but I do think it, we know it's hard enough for everyone to get along up here, right? I remember them asking questions like that at candidate forums and I was like, oh, sure, everybody gets along and then you're like, oh. Sometimes yes, sometimes no. So, I, I think, to me, if people can stay the heck out of that with city-level politics, if we can make that happen and maybe put some teeth behind it, it would be better to say, stay the heck out of city races in as much as it's possible, which doesn't mean I didn't talk to a bunch of candidates and people don't call and ask for advice. I think we've all done that too, where, you know, this person called and asked for advice, I met with Steve, I met with Lynn, I met with all kinds of people when I ran, um, and, and it, it was all helpful. It doesn't mean that they, any of them endorsed me or gave me any money or anything like that, but I really do think, I mean, and this is just the advice of somebody who's on their way out, it would be really nice for us to stay the heck out of city politics. It makes it hard enough already for people coming in and making that transition. So, and then ha, I don't know what the teeth could be, you know, whether it's, you know, wearing the dunce hat at the next meeting when your candidate loses.
I didn't say that out loud.
I know, but I heard it. But I kind of like the idea where you're like, hey, you, you chose the wrong guy. I don't know, you guys, but I do like the idea. you chose the wrong guy, I, I don't know, you guys, but I do like the idea. And yes, it's common sense, we should stay out anyway, but I would really like to see us maintain that. Plus, we talk all the time and hear you guys about public trust, how, and how we can restore that, and it, it would show our citizens that we really care so much about this body being respected, that we're not going to get involved in those elections, that's for our voters to decide.
That is a really, really good point. Councilmember Bearman.
And I, and I, I don't disagree with that, but, you know, from my perspective, having, when I, when I was a voter, trying to determine who the best candidate was, especially as someone who wasn't as familiar with city council as I should have been, you know, in terms of what does city council do, what do they actually have purview over? It is also nice to be able to go to someone who is currently sitting in that position and saying, you know what you're doing, you, you know, you're here, you, you know exactly what it is that city council is tasked to do, therefore, there is really no one better to be able to tell me your thoughts on whether candidate A, B, or C is better at that. And it's not, and, you know, and I, I, my concern is, is kind of similar to Councilmember Hickman, is that if I, if I want to do that, I then have to be sure that I'm having that conversation in person and just with that one person, because otherwise, if I do it in a private message, or I do it on social media in any way, the way the ordinance is written and the way it will remain if city council is left in there, is that it can still be used as a sword against someone. Because someone said something nice about candidate A, but didn't have anything nice to say about candidate B or C, can that be seen as an endorsement, and therefore, could a screenshot of that message be used by either, you know, someone else sitting on city council?
By a certain person, sure.
Or someone in, in the community to make that, to make that council member look bad? And so, again, I, I understand it, and, and hopefully, hopefully, council members will, you know, will be judicious in how they respond to questions about candidates, but I don't, I think, particularly at the city level, I think people know less about city government than they do about the state legislature, or about members of Congress, or about the presidency. And so, I do look to the people who are sitting here, and know what they're talking about, and what they've been through to say, you know, I wasn't, you know, I wasn't clear on that until I got on council, and now that I'm here and I have that perspective, as much as I like all three candidates, you know, I think that, you know, candidate A has the best sense of, of direction, has the best sense of what council, you know, needs to do, and so I just, I'm just concerned that if we leave city council in there, you know, as a topic that can't be discussed in any way that can then be conveyed as a potential ethics violation, all we're doing, all we're doing is leaving in a way to make council members look bad when they just want to give their honest feedback about how, about how, about how this institution should continue, because...
I think, I think the issue of, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't let you finish.
No, that's okay, I was just going to say, because, I mean, I, I, I have received questions, and I do feel, I do feel a responsibility to this seat and to the city council to convey at least enough information so that people know how to make the right decision, and I shouldn't have to be worried or choose my word so carefully, so that it's not, it's not used against me in the future, because that's, that's really what we're faced with here, is not, is how that's, how being used as a shield and not a sword, because it's being used as a sword. And so, how do we fix that problem? I don't think that defining it into, into such a narrow box is the way to do it.
Councilmember Cardola.
I also don't want to legislate, because one person is an asshole. I just say that, I'm just, I'm sorry, but...
That was not a word five curse word?
You know, I mean, are we, are we looking for, to fill a problem because we have, or fix a problem because we have one problematic person doing things like this?
But it's not just that, it can be used as a threat, as we've talked about, by, by even people in the community.
I mean, I, I'm sorry about my choice of words, but seriously, not everyone's doing this. I think we all know that, not everyone is doing this. I haven't filed a single ethics complaint against anybody, right? I do not have any ethics complaints to file, everyone, so, to me, I, I mean, my greater point is, it just, then you have to worry about these things. I, I agree with Kate, I don't disagree with Kate, but I think for the sake of comedy and, and people getting along, I do think there's a way to figure out how to make that work amongst city council members. I, I really, I honestly do, I don't know what it is, it would be nice if it had some teeth, but...
I think, I think it's easier to take care of the problem on that end than all of the things that could come from council members actively campaigning for other council members. I, I just think, and, and honestly, exactly what Councilmember Cardola said, I have found it's helped year after year after year, when I can tell people, and I don't mind saying I really like this about somebody, or this is something that's good about somebody, I don't worry about it if it's a, a really close friend, but I don't go out and actively campaign, and I tell people I can't endorse, because I could be serving with either one or all three of those people, and I don't want to get in the middle of their election. That's their election, and it's with the people of their ward, and I really have tried hard to do that.
But that's, that's, that's the point, though. Your private comments to friends are interpreted as still being an ethical violation under this ordinance currently. Private messages that don't even have to say, I endorse this person, but are defending somebody even, have been interpreted by some, at least, to be ethical violations under our ordinance. And that's what, I guess what I'm saying to you, that, I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but that is the interpretation of some. And therefore, if private messages, you know, that, that don't say, I support this candidate, I endorse that candidate, but say, what you're saying about that person is not correct, or that's a good person, is an ethical violation under this ordinance, and that's extremely problematic to me. Now, maybe you haven't been, you haven't dealt with that directly, but that's, that's why, you know, and I understand, we don't legislate because of one person, but that doesn't mean that there's not more, more people, we don't, we're, we're saying we don't want to do this, because people might start endorsing wholesale across the board, we don't know that either. People may be prudent and not endorse anybody, and restrain themselves, so to speak. My point is this, if we're going to leave it in, in any form or fashion, it needs to be defined to the point where it cannot be used, in my opinion, as a sword, to protect people's First Amendment rights, and we create a balanced playing field, so that we all know what you can and can't do. Can you give money, can you not give money? Can you do a private message? Can you use your Facebook page, or your Twitter page, or your social media page? If nothing on that refer, references you being a councilperson, but just that you're Joe Blow. Those things can be spelled out, but it's going to take more work of staff to hammer all those things out and, and make it more clear, versus saying, are we big boys and girls, trust ourselves in how we're going to use our power of endorsement if we're given it, and move forward? And if we think we need to fix it later, because somebody is being abusive of it, then we fix it later. Right now, I lean to, lean towards, let's just remove it, because we have, you know, we have ongoing issues with it.
Let's make one more stab at, looking at, is there some way we can modulate it, so it doesn't leave people open? But we're only talking about city council, we've already all agreed that we're fine with endorsement prohibition for all other races, is do what you want to do. So...
Okay, we'll gather Oklahoma City and Tulsa, and we'll send that out to you if they have any...
And maybe everybody will say it's no problem at all, and we're just borrowing trouble, and that it's all gray.
Can we look at people's First Amendment rights as well? I mean, as a part of this analysis, because I think, you know, if we're going to be judicious and fair, then we need to look at both sides. And where is that line?
Would you clarify that? I missed the very first part.
A person's individual First Amendment rights, freedom of speech?
Okay.
That line in the political context is very gray, and when it gets to the US Supreme Court, it will be leaned very heavily towards First Amendment.
I suspect it.
Maybe we can better define endorse as it pertains to city council? I think that seems to be the crux of the issue, is just saying nice things about someone considered an endorsement? Or is it, you know, is it money, is it, you know, your name on a mailer, or knocking doors for them? You know, maybe that's a way that we can parse that, because...
Formerly, formerly endorse or actively campaign for, or something like that, because I think it also, I, I think it does give council members some cover, and you get a lot of pressure, so... Under pressure. But I can just say no, so... Nancy Reagan quote.
Okay, so we're down to the, the one issue on city, and we're going to get Oklahoma City and Tulsa, and then we'll ship you something out.
Yeah, that's good. All right, and we have, we are not going to discuss item number two, we don't have any additional information.
Lynn, on, on item number two, I do have a quick, you have a quick question. Are we, I guess I'm most confused, are we going to move forward, is the city going to move forward with the independent study?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I, I thought something might go out today, but maybe we're not sure that the person's willing to do it.
Okay, because I, because I do think that we should.
Oh, definitely.
Should move forward with the independent study, I just wanted, while we were here, and it was kind of on the agenda, if, if there was anything we could discuss about what that study was going to look at, or, you know, those kind of things, because I'm just confused.
Certainly, we can do that.
Sure, the Center for Economic, Economic Development Law reached out to Oklahoma City, several of the people that work on economic development things there, I think Kathy O'Connor is one, I think Brent Bryant is one, and asked them if they had a group that, that they would recommend, that they trusted, that could actually look at this from a kind of a, well, not kind of, but an independent perspective about whether or not this is something that all of the issues and questions are being asked properly, that all the que, you know, all the holes are being filled, that kind of thing, so we can bring back and give councils some comfort level, that's certainly what we heard from, from you guys.
And they will be given all of the previous analysis information.
And so, who they recommended was a guy named Tom Hazinski, and he's with the firm of HVS, which is also a, a national firm that does work throughout the country, I think they're based primarily in Chicago, but they do have some focus in sports and leisure and entertainment, and those types of things that we're looking at with this entertainment district. And yes, they've asked to be able to have all of the information from the CSNL study, and from Dr. Doffenbach, and from the Department of Commerce, there's also some proprietary information from CSNL, that they're working out a confidentiality agreement between CSNL and this firm, so that they'll be able to, to look at that in a little bit more detail. So, Emily Palmeroy's working on that, hopefully, hopefully we'll have something. We're hoping for today, but not today, so, maybe tomorrow, the next day, or something, so we can do that forward.
I'd like to be sure that whoever we choose has a track record in prediction, because, you know, to me, that, that is part of the, part of the issue, is making sure that we can be confident in the predictions, and are confident looking forward that we're not going to, say, face another recession in the next couple of years, that will, you know, impact, impact the outcome of these proposals.
Councilmember Holman.
Can we also make sure whoever we have do it has, and I prefer they have no real, no tie at all to Norman, that they not, you know, you graduate, that they not have lived in Norman, or went to high school here, I prefer somebody that has no connection to Norman at all, actually, who isn't swayed by any particular personal feeling, or relationships, has no stake at all in whether we do this or not, because they don't reside here, and they have no, no relationship to us at all.
Yeah, that's a good...
If that's possible.
Good point, and I think that's one of the reasons they booked it, somebody that was far away.
Out of Chicago.
Any other, Councilmember Hickman? I see.
And, um, I think part of the other comments or, or questions, I guess, what are they going to do? Are they just going to look at the reports that have already been done and criticize them? Are they going to create their own based on new assumptions? Are they going to look at the potential effect on other parts of town, you know, that referred to as quote unquote cannibalization, or whatever? Do we know kind of a general scope of what they're, what they're going to do?
Yeah, I can get that for you.
Okay.
We were not asking them to recreate the study at all, we were asking them to look at the information that was already done, they do have some familiarity with Oklahoma City and Oklahoma City markets, because of some of the work they've done for the, I think, the Fairgrounds Arena deal that they're working on there, that may not be the right word, but, you know, they're, they're putting some type of Fairgrounds through MAPS facility up there, so they do have some familiarity already of their own, independent work they've done on their own about what the markets are in this area, so they'll be able to apply that as well.
I mean, because in my law mind, I'll put it that way, I look at this, I look at it almost like, you know, this is kind of our expert witness that we would hire, who's going to prepare their report, that is going to claim, substantiate, you know, whatever, how we value the city, if you will, independently, this project from how the foundation, you know, Dr. Doffenbach, or whoever, let's say, has valued the project, and I think that's important, you know, so that we can, we have that information to make, to be able to make an informed decision as council. And so, I'm cautious if it's merely a, you know, a, a scholarly, or a peer review, not that that's bad, but I'm not sure if that goes far enough, you know, versus them doing to, you know, the, the words, I guess I heard people use, was their own independent analysis, and I, and I don't, and that's why I struggle with exactly what's the right way of describing it, you know, and I don't know all the ins and outs of what Dr. Doffenbach did or didn't do in his report, but I think that the more robust they can be, the better long-term it is for our, our continuing this conversation, and answer, being able to answer questions, you know, for everybody involved, so to speak. And I just, I would, I would, has, I would hate for us to either A, try to rush it, or B, try to save a few bucks, and not do something more robust, if that's something that they're, I assume, capable of doing, and, and I don't know how else to say that, then...
That's fine, that's good. And I might add to that, if other people have thoughts about what I've thought, what about are they going to ask about this, then I think it would be a good idea to send that to Jeff, so that when he talks to whoever it ends up being, we think it's going to be this person, we don't know for sure yet, that, that information can be relayed, here's what, here's what the city council is concerned about. So, Councilmember Wilson?
I have a couple of concerns about, one, how much is this going to cost? I completely support an independent analysis first and foremost, but I'm curious about how much it's going to cost, and how long it's going to take. Do we, no?
The range is in the 20 to $25,000 range is what was quoted, so that's, a part of that has to do with, we wanted to make sure, not only did they do the work, but they wanted to, we wanted them to come down with a face-to-face meeting with council members and explain what they did, and explain, you know, what their recommendation is. So, that face-to-face meeting costs a little more, so it's going to be in that range, but we're trying to work that, so it's going to be in that range. Timeframe, again, it's going to be, it's going to depend on whether or not we ask them to recreate the wheel versus review information and work that's already been done, and then also rely on some of their own work that they've already done within the region. So, you know, if you have some additional ideas of what you'd like to have covered, I mean, you can send it to me, you can also send it to Emily Palmeroy, she's our attorney, you know, that's working with us on this, so you can send it to either one of us, and we'll try to make sure all those things are covered. But, uh, two or three weeks probably is the timeframe that they thought, you know, there's, they have some other assignments that they're working on, so they couldn't really start immediately, but, you know, maybe two or three weeks or so.
Do we have, I feel like the pressure is on to get this pushed through, so do we have, I hate to throw a bunch of money, which to me, $25,000 is a bunch of money, at something, and we get to July 12th, or whatever, and OUF is done with us, talking to us about this? Do we have any kind of commitment from OUF Foundation that they, like, even want to consider going down this path, continuing down this path if we want to investigate it like this?
Yeah, part of their motivation is what's getting them, the time pressure for them is the private equity... Yeah, part of their motivation is what's getting them, the time pressure for them is the private equity money. I mean, we're, we're focused on the 90 million, but they're focused on all the rest. You know, there's over 200 something million dollars of private investment that will go into this project. And so they've been trying to court those private investment, private equity partners, and frankly, they have other things to do with their money. If it doesn't look like this is going to be able to, something that, that we would like to move forward on. And so they, they, their desire was to have something finished, or at least a decision, you know, up or down, you know, by the end of the month. I think they've been very sensitive, end of June, but I think they've been very sensitive to the fact that, that council wants some more information. I mean, they want some more information.
Surely they would want a council.
Independent analysis.
To be fully vetted on the information, right?
There's also the, the issue that's kind of dangling out there about the North Base lease, and you know, that probably won't get resolved until probably July, when the next group of regions meet, so.
They were looking at September for that.
Excuse me?
Last we heard, it was the fall for that.
I think they have a meeting in July and one in August. I don't think they have one in September, so, but I'll double check that for you. Sure, yeah. So there is a little, they recognize there's a little bit of time, and there's some other pieces that, you know, maybe need to come together. So what they've told us recently and is they're willing to, you know, stick with it a little bit longer, maybe through the end of July or middle or end of August. They don't want to go too much further than that, because again, they're losing their private equity partners that are willing to invest into the project, so.
Thank you.
And I know Sean is helping, so if I've misspoke any of that, please correct me.
I think that's fine. I think certainly we want you to be informed, we want you to make a good decision, have the information you need, but I think Jeff characterizes it pretty well. It's a fleeting opportunity. Thank you very much.
Just make this comment about what the conversation Jeff and I had this morning about this, and that is, we have spent a lot of money already on consultants, and we will be spending more money on this study, but if this is a bad deal and we want to run like crazy, then we really need to know that. It would cost us a lot more to get involved if it's not a good deal. If it's a better deal than we think, or it's as good a deal as we think, then, then we need to know that too. We need to have more assurance. We are, we are taking some risk here in doing this. It could be, it could be really good for the community. We want to know as much as we can, and I, yeah, I don't like spending all the money any more than anyone else, but I, I think that stepping out before we have enough information is just not, that's even worse. We could, we could lose more money that way, so I think this is important that we do this, and it's been expressed over and over again. Mary Francis, you've been patient.
Hey, it's important that you stipulate in the independent study that it will focus on the impact on our budget for the entire city, not just as the Duke Press report did, focus only on the revenue generation in the north, in the University North Park. The entire city is going to be impacted, and we need to know what that's going, what's going to happen to the entire city, and particularly our budget will be impacted by this, and the study needs to look at that.
Councilmember Hickman.
I guess I just want to bring up, in part, what I said in my miscellaneous comments, and I think part of the frustration, I think from everybody, from both sides in the community, is, is just kind of the unknown and, and the lack of sort of a, of a, of a plan or roadmap, and, and we may or may not want one or need one. I guess what I'm getting at is sometimes people lose sight that they know more than the average person, because they've been in meetings, or they've seen presentations, or they've been in conversations. For a, a lot of people in this community and some of us on council, I mean, we've seen a presentation, like, I missed the meeting in October last year. I saw the meeting in September, then there was the presentation last Tuesday night, and I brought up, you know, there's, to me, two pieces to this. There's the zoning and land use piece, and then there's the financial piece. I mean, I think there could be value for everybody to start having, to go ahead and have some meetings and conversations about the land use, you know, just like we would on any, on any item that was coming to council, you know, for a PUD deal, because at the end of the day, it is their land, and we are going to have to consider their request to rezone one way or the other, whether we provide any public funding or not to the arena. I don't think we can necessarily tell them, no, you can't rezone it because we don't want to give you any money for the, for the, for the arena. I mean, and they may not want to do that, I don't know. But I think that, you know, I think that having that conversation and having a public meeting and, and not having just the master plan presented, but, you know, have what Sean, what he would do for any zoning application, you know, kind of, you know, like he would on, like for a PUD, describe, you know, like some of the questions came up about stormwater. How would you address stormwater? You know, what other public amenities would you provide? Would you provide public wifi? You know, things like that, that people can hear and see, that may or may not like to, make them like it more or less, but it at least allows the conversation to occur, that provides information to people that have questions about what this might look like, what could, what could the impacts of it be, what, and helps us, I think, as council to make an informed decision. Because as I understand right now, and I don't know if this is going to happen, there's a special planning commission meeting scheduled for next week.
Sixth.
The sixth, you know, and, you know, I have no idea, I mean, not that I need to, I guess, but, you know, to my knowledge, I assume none of us, like, you know, maybe knows what a PUD might look like, you know, beyond what we've seen in the master plan, and I just think that would be helpful for the public, for us as council, if we're going to be partners, if you will, to go ahead and have that public dialogue, and maybe the planning commission meeting is sufficient for that to occur. I'm not saying it's not, and I don't know if that's still intended to occur, but I think that, to me, I think public meetings are one of the things that we have been missing out on. In the last meeting we had on Tuesday, was such a short period of time for questions, there were no questions from the audience, that, you know, we, we got some information out there, but we didn't, we didn't, I think there were council members who still had questions to ask and stuff, and so I'm not saying that the foundation needs to bring back every person that they had there that night, you know, but, you know, between what Jeff's works they've done in the, you know, in the Center for Economic Development Law, but I'm more focusing right now on the, on the land use part. Let's set aside the money aspect of it for a little while, while the study's being done, let's talk about the land use part and see if we can all get comfortable with, we're not saying we're going to, kind of like we did with Center City. We did the Form Based Code, a lot of nashing of teeth, you know, amendments to it that were done, and then six months later, we passed the TIF. I'm not saying that's what the foundation wants, but I think that, you know, we could split these apart a little bit, if they're willing to do that, and have discussions about the land use piece, that I know that, I think some of us have questions about, that I'd hate for them to go to planning commission, present something that none of us have seen at this scale and magnitude, and we're, and, and we're not happy with what they present, or we have a lot more questions. So I just put that out there for, for people to chew on.
So are you suggesting we have a meeting between now and the sixth?
Don't know how that's possible, but I, I don't know. I mean, I'm just, I'm actually not even going to be in town on the sixth, so I won't be.
There's Saturday, Sunday, there's plenty of times.
What's, what's our conference?
What's our what?
Next Tuesday.
What?
ADA.
Do you have someone coming in, like, traveling in for that?
Not traveling, no, I don't think there are consultants coming for that.
I think so.
I think it's just, I just think it's staff. What, what day of the week is the sixth?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Is the ADA deal, like, what's the timeline? Like, can we do it, can we do it the same night, or is that going to be a long presentation? Can we do that the same night as?
We could probably do it as another night. I don't, I don't think.
I mean, I think we could still do the same night. I don't know how long the presentation that is.
Pressure on us.
I don't think you can do both of those topics for pre-conference.
So I think we're going to want to leave time for the public to go to ask questions, honestly, and council members, but.
So see if ADA, see if the ADA can be moved to a different.
You know, we had hoped, along the lines of what you're discussing, we had hoped to have a little bit further along on a draft, a project plan for tonight, and that's one reason this ended up getting on the agenda, so that we could lay that out for council to talk about and chew on and give us some direction on it, so.
That's why, I'm trying to set aside the, I'm trying to set aside the money part and the, and the project plan part of it, sort of, and, because I think, I mean, for me, the time that I've been on council, I, I mean, I, I think that we all have a grasp of the zoning aspect of this, the project plan, the TIF sort of part of it, like Center City is the bigger, you know, challenge, you know, and, and like I said, the foundation may be like, you know, no, we don't want to discuss the, those two separately, and I, and, you know, and that's their call, and I respect that. But I think if we could have a conversation that focused on the land use part, you know, like we would, traffic analysis, you know, you know, you know, the stormwater, all of our planning, all of our city departments that, I assume, ultimately will do a staff report on this request to amend the PUD. I mean, I'm assuming, you know, that, that we kind of have a preview of that, since this is such a big deal, that, you know, we get a chance to then provide some feedback on it, so we're not doing it from the dais, you know, the night that we're considering the, the PUD amendment, or we're not hearing about it after the fact, after it's already been presented at this special planning commission, or maybe we go to the planning commission meeting and we hear it and, and go over there and ask questions or whatever. I don't know, I'm just, but it seems to me like, you know, as a sort of a, maybe a baby step in a, in a way of also allowing the public to have more information and involvement, it seems like a way to wade into an area that's not quite as contentious, if you will, as the project plan funding aspect of it, while we wait for the funding, the independent study to come back. Because I, I'm assuming eventually there'll be a PUD amendment, and our staff will write a staff report like they would on any, on any.
That's actually being prepared.
Comes to the council.
That's being prepared this week, because it will have to be prepared for the planning commission for Wednesday. In normal process, you know, the, the planning commission, of course, is advisory body, and normally, whatever they recommend, then it's going to come to council anyway, usually about a month later. So it will come to you, but maybe, maybe you want to preview it, maybe you want to go to the planning commission, maybe you want to see what happens in the planning commission, and then have a study session between then and when you actually vote on it. But I mean, whatever you think is best to get the information for you.
And we could.
I don't think you want to get ahead of planning commission.
Yeah, maybe we, maybe we schedule this meeting after the planning commission meeting, but before it starts on the council process, so that if, you know, if we can, we can take some of the feedback from the planning commission, we can provide some feedback, because I mean, I just think of like some of the small ones that I've been involved in, where I've met with the developers ahead of time, or the builders, or we're on the dais and we're negotiating that night on the fly, this is something that's significant enough that that seems like that would be very challenging to do, and to my knowledge, I know there's been some feedback provided, but I've not seen it incorporated into the PUD, and, and I think that that would be helpful to the public, as well as to, you know, having a, an open conversation, for, hopefully for everybody. Timing wise, I, I don't, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. It should be before the planning, after the planning, next Tuesday, the Tuesday after. I just think we need, I think it needs to be a night that we can set aside some time so that the public can ask questions, council members can get their questions answered, and we can either, because, let's be honest, if we can't figure out the land use part of it, then maybe the financing part doesn't matter.
Could, could I ask for Mr. Rieger to make, I think he wants to make a comment.
Please, thank you, Mayor, and I, we're certainly on behalf of that foundation, we appreciate every opportunity to meet and, and discuss these items with you and carry through particulars. I always welcome that, and my door is always open. I mean, you guys know that, right? I'm texting you all the time saying I want to meet, 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 so anytime, we appreciate that, and we've always welcomed public meetings on this as well. I would just urge one point of caution, in that the foundation has been very clear from the outset, and I will say it again tonight, this project does not happen without a partnership. And so the financing component is important, and not just relevant, important, fundamental to this project happening. So I don't want to waste anybody's time if we're not going to have the financing piece go right alongside it or in very close proximity to it, because I don't think then the PUD is a, is a meaningless, a meaningful exercise.
But if we're waiting two or three weeks for this independent study, during that time, you know, or, you know, would a, would a public meeting on just the land use piece of it be helpful for the public to get information and knowledge, or council members to give you input like we do on PUDs all the time, so that, so that we can get that part, the extent that we're going to, polished up to where everybody is comfortable with it, and then we can just gnash teeth about the project plan and the, the, the funding part of it?
I would throw it up, a suggestion, the project plan and that financing piece that's been talked about is, is already sort of, I think, in play and was discussed, I think, last Tuesday night. I think the financing piece is, is obviously going to be looked at closely in terms of the fiscal study, but I don't know why your structure of the financing piece has to wait to get to fiscal study. It seems to me fiscal study is going to look at the financing piece and decide. In fact, maybe it's important to have the financing piece figured out, so they know what they're looking at, so that, I would suggest maybe they do go alongside each other, the project plan and the PUD, so then that independent study has an even better look at what they're looking at. That would be my suggestion.
I, I think part of what Councilmember Hickman is talking about is that this, if this happens, it is a package. It is about the land use, it is about what the development can look like. It is about, are there things that we could do that make it even more compelling of a land use plan? Because right now, we've got the, the, the public has just focused on this amount of money for this arena, and that is not really what this whole thing is. This is a comprehensive plan for an area, and we are overcoming a lot of negative feelings about what happened before, because it didn't live up to what people, you know, thought that it should. It has lived up financially in many, many ways, but we want this, if, if it's done, we want it to, to be even better. And so I just think it's the idea of getting the bigger picture out there to people and let people have a little input. So I frankly think it's a good idea.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, um, so I have a concern about the process that was used to select the consulting company. So I see Emily Palmeroy as being conflicted herself, and then her asking, that's what they do, they finance TIF deals.
They're, they're legal consultants.
Yes, and their business is legal consulting on these sorts of projects. And we asked them to ask their associates to provide a recommendation. Is that the way we usually find consultants? Because I would be much, I would think it would be much more transparent if you put out an RFP, you got applicants, and then you picked the ones, and you looked at people's criteria, their track records, and then you pick somebody. That's a much more transparent process that I think we've used in other situations. So I'll just alert you now that I, I would imagine there will be backlash on the process, and nobody's going to, I personally won't treat this process as a way to find an independent analysis. So I'll just lay that out there. I don't think it will help with the PR campaign.
Were you asking for comments? I'm related to the process of Paul Markeroli, who you retire after, you know, 30, 40 years, to independent, the independent assessment and analysis. I, I would wish that they would, you would ask the question. What, what? Tell us why we shouldn't do this. But tell us why we shouldn't do this, and what else should we do if we don't? That's the question I would ask. Not reassert what's already been there, not look at the numbers that are there, but why not do this? That, and keep it, keep it separate from anything that's ever been done before, and then do their own analysis. Then you'll have some good data, and you'll be able to look at one versus the other and say, hey, does this make sense or doesn't make sense? But I'll tell you what, it's interesting, and, you know, I've stayed out of this for a long time. I did this a long time ago, and as I started talking to people, and I didn't solicit this, but to, to the number, every person I've talked to have had bad feelings about what's gone on over there, and they have not felt that the city has treated, treated that project right. And so you're going forward with this, this larger project and much more complex, much more complex, and a lot more questions. This is really the time for trans. This is really the time for transparency. This is really the time to say, you know, we really want this to be a great thing. We really want a good partnership. We really want a liberal community. We really want millennials to stay. I'm not even sure what that means anymore. I'm not sure. You can get 10 people and tell me what a millennial is, you'll get 10 different answers. Quality of life. We really have an opportunity to really make this an amazing place. I'd like to see it happen.
Thank you.
Uh, I would, um, frame the question a little differently. I think the question the city needs to ask itself is, is this the best way to spend a hundred million dollars? Money does not grow on your asset. And this is a different kind of question from what the question that say property owners have to ask themselves. Well, the OU Foundation has an asset, and they want to use that asset as best they can use that asset. That's great. That's their job. The job of the city is to ask itself, you are entrusted with the public's money. Is this the best way to spend $100 million? Or is this maybe a good way, but there are dramatically better ways to do it? That's the question you need to ask yourself. And I think that involves a separate set of questions from the questions that the OU Foundation is very correctly asking when it's thinking about. That's why the OU Foundation is separate from the city. These are different entities with different interests. So to me, as a citizen, what I want to see you all ask is, is this the best way to spend this huge chunk of change you're proposing to spend? That's the question.
Mayor? And I guess I just want to add on to what I've, what I've kind of said. Building on, I guess, the comments from, from, from people, because from my vantage point, I, I think we're at a point where public meetings and conversations are, are, are positive. One way or the other, regardless of what side you are on this issue. As I, I think, because I think it's helpful, you know, to us in making a decision. I'll use it for example, NEDC, you know, they've done their, their study, Matthew, whatever his name is, the Market Square guy, you know. But the public hasn't seen any of that. People have talked a little bit about it, you know, and I've seen Jason Smith weigh in on, on Facebook. I'd like to have Matthew and his group come here, you know, make some presentation, answer some public questions. I mean, I've got some questions for him that I've, you know, I've tried to get in touch with one another, but we've, we've missed each other. But my conver, my private conversations with him, if I'm able to do that, aren't the same as the public hearing what their research has found and having a chance to have that discussion. It may or may not change anybody's mind, but we all are assuming that everyone else out there knows everything that we know if you happen to have gone to the NEDC summit that I did happen to go to in, in February and heard a part of that presentation. I would love to throw us to figure out a way in this period of time that all these things are happening to schedule a meeting like that. I think that would be positive. And then, you know, I could ask questions, others could ask questions, the public could ask questions. And it informs people better about the surrounding information that may or may not be helpful in making an informed decision. Because we sometimes assume that other people know everything that we know. And you don't know what you don't know until you don't know you don't know it. Those are my favorite lines. Don't know what you don't know until you don't know you don't know it. Anyway, and the same thing with EDAB, you know, Economic Development Advisory Board, you know, and the Kim Lee Horn parking study. You know, you know, it's kind of like, I think that, you know, the parking garage is an important piece of this puzzle. You know, we've had EDAB and Kim Lee Horn doing a parking study and talking about a multi-jurisdictional parking authority. That's going to have to, at some point in time, I assume, plug into this conversation, you know, as far as what would that look like? How would this parking garage up there play into it? Having that public conversation with those consultants, you know, I know this costs money, but this is a big investment and a big conversation we're having, I think warrants having a public meeting, talking about the parking garage, and how that fits into a multi-jurisdictional parking authority. And the work that EDAB has been doing, and we've been talking to the county about, you know, and, you know, Kim Lee Horn. You know, I mean, to me, those are two examples of related topics that are information that would be, I think, valuable to the public, uh, to us as council members in making a, an informed decision, and allow us to have this dialogue about this important project based on, you know, data and consultants and work that have been done, you know, so that we can all be informed, you know, both in the public, you know, and, you know, on city council. And there may be other topics, but those are two that come to my mind that I know are kind of already in the pipeline to the hopper. Uh, that would be, that would be helpful, because I know for me, I have questions in both of those two areas as well. And it's one thing for me to call up people and try to track people down and ask my little questions, but that doesn't help the public in knowing what I was told in a private phone conversation, or making sure that I'm asking the right questions in the right way, or hearing what other people are asking and what that, that information is. And so that's kind of why I was saying that I think these public meetings, and I think the land use plan is, is a piece of that, uh, are, can be important parts of this conversation for us to all help make an informed decision.
Thank you. So we're going to be looking at a possible date, but not before the planning commission, after the planning commission to have a presentation on the land use. That's what I heard was the.
Right.
Okay.
Maybe after the planning commission does their work, but before council would be asked to weigh in on that.
And can we talk to NEDC and the?
Yeah, the, 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 the issue with the Market Street study, which is what you're talking about, is they're wanting to do, I mean, there's been a lot of time invested and money invested in doing it, and they're wanting to do a big public rollout. So they might, they might be willing to come and do, you know, abbreviated study or something. But I know that the members of NEDC are wanting to do a big public rollout of it. So, but it's got great information in it for sure. So we, we can sure look at those things. I, I wrote them down right here. Okay, any more comments? All right, and those are, meetings adjourned.